I have a few, Mr. Chair. Now, on the agricultural fair, is this primarily for Allegheny County? Or are you going to advertise next year to bring people in from outside of Allegheny?
I feel like we can advertise to bring folks in from outside, John. Again, it came together really fast and furious this past year, but I think it can be even bigger and better this next year, for sure.
I agree. Now, I don't know if you were aware, but the TDA is paying high school students to do surveys at these various events.
I was aware of that, yes, I was aware of that.
And the reason why I wanted to ask, because 100%, well, there was only two people that were surveyed that were from Allegheny, outside of Allegheny, and they were visiting people from Allegheny.
Right.
Now, the TDA, if you will petition them, this is just for your information, if you are going to have that event bringing in tourism, then any capital improvements, changes that you have to do out there, you can petition the TDA for a grant for that and your advertisement.
I've been very, I don't want to go down the list of folks who gave money, because some of that's very personable, but personal, but the TDA did give us money last year, yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure that you're aware, because a lot of people, I know, I've spoken with a number of the volunteer fire departments, they weren't aware that that money's there, so let's utilize it, and before everybody starts to work, you heard the word tax, this is an occupancy tax from people that are spending the night in Allegheny County, there isn't a penny of property tax involved in this, so it's money coming into the county, let's utilize it.
Absolutely.
Good job, thank you for that, and hopefully, things will straighten out, you can do the advertisement and make it bigger and better this year.
I think, I will say this, and not tooting our own horn, but I'm sure a lot of y'all have heard comments from the public, and everything I heard was positive, I think everybody was really happy with the Ag Fair, it was, Mother Nature was kind to us, it was a perfect weekend, but it was a good thing, I think especially with COVID, people were ready to get out and do something fun, it's family oriented and wholesome and good for the county, so we're gonna continue with it.
The only suggestion noted on the surveys were, they would like to get more rides, so put a donkey out there next year.
We'll do our best. When I look at our 40,000, almost $41,000 worth of expenses, 36,500 of that was rides, so it, you know, we couldn't have done it without folks giving donations and the commissioners were.
Going back to what you said about the people, I worked the gates several nights, and people leaving complimented that greatly, what a good time they had.
Y'all had a smile on their face, didn't they, Bill?
They had a smile on their face.
Yep, good deal.
A lot of good compliments.
Good deal, good deal.
Y'all done a good job with that.
While I'm in front of you, I'll give you 30 more seconds here, we do have our Ag Awards Dinner, it is February 15th, if anybody needs tickets, I've got them right here, it is a limited number, so, you know, if you want five tickets, I have to write down or get you guys to write it down, so if you want two, good deal, and this is funded a lot by line item that you all give us, so certainly appreciated that, appreciate that, it really shines a spotlight on our county's biggest industry, which is agriculture, so much appreciated. Anyway, I will entertain any other questions, if not, John, I'm gonna write your name down on, for two, and I'll...
See you at church.
Okay, sounds good, anybody else want tickets, you can see me, or you can go buy Cooperative Extension or Soil and Water, and you can get tickets there, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I really like that you kept the gate price down really low, I think that really helped out a lot of families, especially if they have a lot of kids.
Had a lot of people tell us we were too cheap, but, you know what, we, it was just, it was a good thing, Michelle, I think it was good, yeah, yeah.
That's one about in a great way the first year, that is a big, big...
Big undertaking, it's a big undertaking, alright, thank you all.
Thank you. Next, Glade Creek, Mr. David Higgins.
Evening, folks, my name is David Higgins with the Glade Creek Volunteer Fire Department, I'm here tonight to discuss fundraising, that's, we've hit a couple of glitches, and while I'm here talking about, really pertaining to those glitches, but, and I'm glad Cole's here, I talked to Cole the other day, and we want to do a lawnmower race, but we're not allowed to use the tractor this year, because you have to be on the committee to use the tractor, so, we don't have anyone on the committee, so, and on lawnmower race, we don't charge, it's just donations, and we can't afford to rent tractors and spend a lot of money to do that, so, by not being able to utilize the tractor, we won't be doing a lawnmower race. And next thing, we're lining up for a mudsling, and it's like, that's out too, because Cole told me I need to go up to the town and talk with them, and I did, and to do a mudsling, any water we use, they're gonna charge us $3 per 100 gallons of water, so, you're talking about more money, so, I guess the mudsling's out for us. Sort of running into a few glitches here and there, but, the next thing we'll talk to you about, is, y'all know about the Music on Main, that's been going on for years, and y'all been generous to help them, we're wanting to do gospel on Main, there won't be no beer gardens, there won't be no drinking industry, it'll be gospel singing, we're wanting to try to do two this year, is what we got in mind. And we're also gonna do, everything goes as planned, we're gonna do a gun show, and we're also gonna do our $3,000 money giveaway, like we generally do, but, we're here to see if y'all might help us a little bit on the gospel on Main Street, like I said, we want to do two this year, try to get started, get some groups in, just something else for people to do, and then we'll just take up donations for the fire department, basically is what we got in mind. So, we come for you tonight to see if y'all might help us with a couple thousand dollars, a thousand for each event, and then if something happened, we don't do an event, something, you know, if things does happen, then it'd just be a thousand per event's what we're basically asking for, to help us about getting singers.
Any other questions? Yes, well, actually, on these, just like I just so said with Johnny Wishon... So let's utilize it and before everybody starts to work, you heard the word tax, this is an occupancy tax from people that are spending the night in Allegheny County. There isn't a penny of property tax involved in this. So it's money coming into the county, let's utilize it.
Absolutely.
Good job. Thank you for that and hopefully things will straighten out. You can do the advertisement and make it bigger and better this year.
I think, I will say this and not tooting our own horn, but I'm sure a lot of y'all have heard comments from the public and everything I heard was positive. I think everybody was really happy with the Ag Fair. It was, Mother Nature was kind to us. It was a perfect weekend, but it was a good thing. I think especially with COVID, people were ready to get out and do something fun. It's family oriented and wholesome and good for the county. So we're gonna continue with it.
The only suggestion noted on the surveys were they would like to get more rides. So put a donkey out there next year.
We'll do our best. When I look at our 40,000, almost $41,000 worth of expenses, 36,500 of that was rides. So it, you know, we couldn't have done it without folks giving donations and the commissioners were.
Going back to what you said about the people, I worked the gate several nights and people leaving complimented that greatly of what a good time they had.
Y'all had a smile on their face, didn't they?
They had a smile on their face.
Yep, good deal.
A lot of good compliments.
Good deal, good deal.
Y'all done a good job with that.
While I'm in front of you, I'll give you 30 more seconds here. We do have our Ag Awards Dinner. It is February 15th. If anybody needs tickets, I've got them right here. It is a limited number, so you know, if you want five tickets, I have to write down or get you guys to write it down. So if you want two, good deal. And this is funded a lot by line item that you all give us, so certainly appreciated that. Appreciate that. It really shines a spotlight on our county's biggest industry, which is agriculture. So much appreciated. Anyway, I will entertain any other questions? If not, John, I'm gonna write your name down on for two and I'll...
See you at church.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else want tickets, you can see me or you can go buy Cooperative Extension or Soil and Water and you can get tickets there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I really like that you kept the gate price down really low. I think that really helped out a lot of families, especially if they have a lot of kids.
Had a lot of people tell us we were too cheap, but you know what? We, it was just, it was a good thing, Michelle. I think it was good, yeah, yeah.
That's one about in a great way the first year. That is a big, big...
Big undertaking, it's a big undertaking. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Next, Glade Creek, Mr. David Higgins.
Evening, folks. My name is David Higgins with the Glade Creek Volunteer Fire Department. I'm here tonight to discuss fundraising. We've hit a couple of glitches and while I'm here to talk about, really pertaining to those glitches, but, and I'm glad Cole's here. I talked to Cole the other day and we want to do a lawnmower race, but we're not allowed to use the tractor this year because you have to be on the committee to use the tractor. So we don't have anyone on the committee, so. And on lawnmower race, we don't charge, it's just donations. And we can't afford to rent tractors and spend a lot of money to do that. So by not being able to utilize the tractor, we won't be doing a lawnmower race. And next thing, we're lining up for a mudsling. Sounds like that's out too. Because Cole told me I need to go up to the town and talk with them and I did. And to do a mudsling, any water we use, they're gonna charge us $3 per 100 gallons of water. So you're talking about more money. So I guess the mudsling's out for us. Sort of running into a few glitches here and there, but the next thing we'll talk to you about is y'all know about the Music on Main, it's been going on for years. And y'all have been generous to help them. We're wanting to do gospel on Main. There won't be no beer gardens, there won't be no drinking industry, it'll be gospel singing. We're wanting to try to do two this year is what we've got in mind. And we're also gonna do, everything goes as planned, we're gonna do a gun show and we're also gonna do our $3,000 money giveaway like we generally do. But we're here to see if y'all might help us a little bit on the gospel on Main Street. Like I said, we want to do two this year, try to get started, get some groups in, just something else for people to do and then we'll just take up donations for the fire department, basically is what we've got in mind. So we come for you tonight to see if y'all might help us with a couple thousand dollars, a thousand for each event. And then if something happened, we don't do an event, something, you know, if things does happen, then it'd just be a thousand per event is what we're basically asking for to help us about getting singers.
Any other questions?
Yes, well, actually, on these, just like I just so said with Johnny Wishon, you should, in my opinion, make application with the TDA. Now, I've got the resolution, or the statute in front of me and it specifically states expenditures that in the judgment of the entity responsible for expended in the next proceeds of the tax are designed to increase the use of the lodging facilities, meeting facilities, or convention facilities in a county to attract tourists or business travelers to the county. Now, you are trying to attract people for your mudslings and things of that nature.
Right, yeah.
Well, I feel, I've done a lot of stupid things in my life. I jumped out of perfectly good airplanes, but I have not got enough nerve to go to that man and ask for him for some money that he has not budgeted for. I feel that really, David, you should go to the TDA on these events, make application for a grant. And that grant can include, because the term includes tourist related capital expenditures, ask for money for the water. That's going to be a capital expenditure for that event. And you can also ask for your advertising money, if you're gonna bring, if you're gonna have to pay groups in, ask them for that money and if they turn you down, then come to, you know, your next resolve is to come to us. They are a subcommittee of the county commissioners. But, you know, we deal with a budget and believe me, I'm not going against him because that's the first thing he says is it isn't in the budget, nobody told me about it, I couldn't budget for it. Now, there are other commissioners may be braver than I, but I am not. Try the TDA, make the application and if you don't, if they are not able to give you a grant for that, you know, I would suggest that you come back to us for that one. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
We could do that and, I mean, you know, it's not in the budget, I understand that and it might be something we'd have to wait and do after budget year, so to see if we can get back in there.
I support what John says too, they've got money available and...
Well, good advice is always a great thing and we appreciate that too, so.
Like I said, if it don't work out with them, come back.
I would love to see, I would love to see Allegheny Inn covered up because you've got a mudsling going on or you've got a...
Well, you may have quite a few from the mudsling, but...
If you've got a gospel singing going on, you're bringing people in, they're gonna be happy and guess what? They pay, that occupancy tax goes, a tax goes up, there's over 100,000 in there right now.
A lot of R and B and Bs are getting in the county too now, so.
You let's talk with the town about closing off the street.
Yeah, well, I mean...
I would recommend a gospel sing at the county fairgrounds.
We're gonna...
We got seats up there, we can get around.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to the town, this was just sort of my first stop, so that...
If that doesn't work, we certainly leave the fairground.
And, you know, I was hoping maybe sometime we could work out, maybe we could get to use the tractor a little bit too, if that can work out any and I don't know how you do that, but...
If I remember, Mr. Chair, that tractor was purchased by the fairgrounds committee and is owned by the fairgrounds committee, so you're gonna have to talk to them. That's not a county-owned piece of property, correct?
I don't argue that. What I would say is that we had discussions about the use of that equipment at the fairgrounds and the liability that goes along with it. And that is what prompted the action of only allowing certain individuals to utilize that equipment.
I understand that. I mean, that's nothing wrong with that, but you know, we are insured in case somebody did get hurt, so that's, and we can bring you a paper. We do that when we rent the school, we take them a paper showing we are covered, that the school's not liable, so.
You've gotta have an event insurance.
Yeah, but that's just the one day insurance, but we can bring insurance from our VFIS that shows that we are insured and that the county's not liable, so.
As I recall, that there were several components that went into that decision. Insurance is one.
Understand that, but it's just a shame that we can't do a lawnmower race on account of that, but you know, it is what it is. We'll move on to something else.
I was just gonna add on to what John said, that obviously the TDA's there, the Rotary Club's there, the Lions Club, you know, for donations. There's a half a dozen different 501(c) s in the county that might be interested, you know, in helping you out.
Okay, that'll work. Well, thank y'all for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you for everything you do, David. Your volunteers, our best wishes, thank you.
Next is Mr. Nick Hawkes, TDA funding.
Good evening, everyone. Won't be before you long, the sheriff was gonna be here, but he had a conflict in schedule, so he asked me to come. But I got some bullet points to run over with you. This is, I guess, about him trying to secure some funding from the TDA with regards to the jail cell that used to be in the courthouse. But, so several years ago, the cell was on the courthouse lawn, I guess everyone here remembers that, stayed there for quite a while and then at some point, the county moved it to the landfill. The sheriff was actually telling me earlier today that he had heard from folks, I guess throughout the community that may know, that could have possibly been one of the original cells from the very first courthouse here in the county, maybe the one that was in the fire. But we don't have no way of knowing that for sure, but he has been told that. There were some citizens, I guess at some point, that reached out to him, to him and to some of the board members, I don't know if it's current board members or prior board members, inquiring as to the jail cell being over at the landfill. So he spoke with some of the board members, I don't know if these were prior board members or some of you guys who he had conversations with, about bringing that cell back up to the office and doing something, you know, useful with it. So he's got some thoughts on using it for, I guess, various things. It has been moved to our office and his thoughts are to use inmate labor to do the work on the cell itself and to purchase any steel that may be needed through the school. He's also looking to pour maybe a concrete pad out front of our building and setting it on it. He has submitted an application to the TDA and hopes to secure some funding there. If that all gets taken care of, his plans is to have him a jail-a-thon this summer and hopefully do a fundraiser for something. His thoughts on it.
I have a couple of questions. Why in front of the jail? If you're gonna have a jail-a-thon, now, bear with me, I remember in 1959, not 1859, but 1959, that jail cell was sitting on the courthouse lawn. And to raise money, any man, mature individual that didn't have a beard, they went into the jail cell and they stayed in there until a certain amount of money was raised, then they could come out. Now, if you put that, if you're gonna use it for the purpose you are and you put it in front of the sheriff's department, that cuts down on the traffic. Why not put it back in front of the courthouse and use it the way we used to, like we did in 1959? And I remember I said 1959, not 1859, please, I'm not that old.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer that to the powers that be that get this thing, you know, going. Maybe there needs to be some more discussion about it, but he would have been here to have talked about it tonight, but he had another meeting, so.
You want traffic and you know, Main Street is where you're gonna get the traffic. Yeah, that's the only, I think it's a great idea, you know.
I think it would draw a lot of attention.
Yeah, and it might, I might even find myself on the inside of it.
Was that not the bicentennial?
That was bicentennial, yeah.
That's a thought process, maybe there needs to be some more thoughts to go into it, but as long as, I guess, ultimately something gets done with it, I think that's the goal.
You know, I'll tell you what's gonna happen with your application to the TDA, they're gonna ask you where the location is because one of the requirements is, it's gotta be designed to bring in tourism. Well, if you set it back there off the beaten path, you're not attracting tourism. But if you, you know, and one of the members of the TDA is sitting back there right now, but if it's sitting there on Main Street and during streets, during Music on Main or during the Heritage Festival, contrive to lock up a few county commissioners and then go and ask for bail from the people that are around, you might be able to raise more funds, you know.
Maybe this is the start, you know, to generate some more of these conversations, but you know, I just wanted to...
Give you 10 cents to get Bill out of jail.
Someday you might pay 10 cents, stay there, mightn't you?
Well, we can talk about this again. We got some conversation started there.
Thank you. Be safe out there, Nick.
On business, fairground steering update, Mr. Cole Edwards.
I don't have a beard, so I don't think that bodes well for me. So in your package, you've got a fairgrounds advertising sheet and if you want, we can go down through that line by line, y'all can follow along with me. In our last steering committee meeting, we discussed advertising and the base would be just like the signs that are there now on the grandstands, a four by eight sign and that would be a cost of $500 and that would be at a three-year minimum, so they would be in for 1,500 minimum. Do the same thing for a, what we're calling a bronze package, that's that four by eight sign plus digital and the business would be promoted one time per hour for a year at a cost of 750. And then you can see the prices go up as do the promotion times per year as well. If we're unable to use a logo, because we won't know until we receive a digital copy to that logo, if it'll work on the sign or not, if we're unable to use that and it's just wording for the advertisement, then it would be a discount of $100. And it's proposed that the money collected for these advertisements be split 50/50 between the fairgrounds committee and the county. And the money that goes to the county would be earmarked specifically for maintenance and repair. Our thinking behind this would be that people would be more apt to give money if they know that's gonna go right back into the fairgrounds.
You said fairgrounds committee, but this, your handout says fairgrounds advisory committee.
Well, and I believe that that's what we're typically referring to those as because they are in fact an advisory committee.
The fairgrounds committee, the fairgrounds advisory committee, are you representing the county and the fairgrounds committee and who else?
Not sure I'm following.
Fairgrounds advisory committee, why do they need money? Are we paying them for advice now?
They put forth a good deal of money to purchase that sign, if I'm not mistaken. And a lot of people donate money to them for them to turn around and put money right back into the fairgrounds and more people are more apt to donate money to them than they are the county.
The county put some money into the sign also, didn't we?
And we would be recouping money from this deal as well.
Okay. The only question I have, Mr. Chair.
It says a sign on the grandstand, I'm trying to picture where it would be on the grandstand.
It's where the signs are now. If you've noticed, there's advertisement signage up above.
Up above, okay, all right, thank you.
On the digital sign, it says promoted one time per hour. What length, is that a 15 second, 30 second?
Well, we didn't set a length just for the fact that, you know, depending on, we don't know how many we're gonna have sold between now and a year from now and so we can't guarantee a length, but we can guarantee a number of times promoted within an hour.
I just remember when you advertised on the radio, you bought a 30 second package or minute package or whatever.
We had those discussions in our meeting, yeah.
But this is just sort of, they might want 30 seconds or they might want a minute.
Right, well, and we can't guarantee them either, but this is just kind of a baseline to get us started and then once we go through it for half a year or a year, we'll have a better idea of what we can do within a given timeframe.
So I mean, this, like for a year, that's, that sign, is it up 24/7?
I mean, as it is now, I mean, that sign, I mean, is constantly on and so, yeah, I mean, it's up 24/7.
Procedure 50/50 split, is that what you said, man? Go ahead.
That's all I've got.
Good, okay.
Yep.
Good deal, we appreciate it. Are you ready?
Do we need a motion on that? I mean, to...
Accept the fee schedule.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Motion to accept this fee schedule that Cole's presenting. Got a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion is second, interfere discussion, not all in favor, 5-0. Disc golf, ribbon cutting, Mr. Edwards.
Just like to let y'all know and invite y'all, we're having the ribbon cutting for the disc golf course this Saturday, the 12th, and it's at 11:00 a.m. What we're doing with this is we're having a doubles tournament and it's $20 per team and right now, so far, we've got 10 teams signed up. Will, we expect more to sign up day of and the money raised from this tournament will just go directly back into the disc golf course. We're doing it rain or shine. I'd also like to thank Napco. I designed some scorecards for this and they've offered to print 50 of them free of charge for us and, but yeah, so it'd be nice if y'all could come.
Sure. And it starts at the Lions Club Pavilion, is that the first hole?
Yeah, first hole's at, there's signage in place now. Napco also made us a sign to go at the end of the parking lot directing to the first tee, but you're more than welcome to come if you think you can do that trail.
You ready?
We're gonna see ya.
I'm not much of a disc roller.
Roll it if you want to, whatever. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Rita Miller, tax administrator.
Evening.
Evening.
I've come before you tonight, as always, on the, in the first Monday in February, there's two things that I have to do per statute. And the first one is statute 105369 and I must report to you all unpaid 2021 taxes that are unpaid or liens on real property. So in your packet, you've got a list of all of those and so as of February the 1st, the amount unpaid was 614,729 and 82 cents for a collection rate of 97.31%. And that being said and presented to you, I need to ask you to set an advertising date to advertise the 2021 delinquent taxes and typically we do this the second or third week in April. My recommendation would be April the 13th edition of the Allegheny News.
Motion that we accept a recommended date. Got a motion to accept April the 13th, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion is second, in discussion, not all in favor, 5-0.
And the next thing I'd request of you tonight is to set the dates for the 2022 Board of Equalization and Review. Have to be held between the first Monday in April and the first Monday in May. Talked to Theresa about how many appeals she has right now, she's got about a dozen. Talked to Theresa about how many appeals she has right now, she's got about a dozen. Of course, those may get worked through before the Board of UNR actually happens, so I'd recommend two different nights.
See, first, what about the second Monday night? Work for the board, that's the, gotta have three board members here.
Three board members, yes, sir.
Second Monday night of the month.
Doesn't take a full board, but.
Right.
Three of us have to be here, isn't it?
Second Monday night, agreeable with the board.
I have no objections for that, that be the 12th of April? What your, excuse me, the 11th of April?
Since the 11th.
Okay, so. What, what?
Third, the second, or the?
The 18th is Easter Monday.
Fourth Monday.
The 25th.
Keeps us.
Usually do 6:00 p.m. if that's.
1800's fine.
Okay. All right, so I've got that down for April the 11th and the 25th at 6:00 p.m.
Right.
All right.
Keeps us away from Easter.
Any questions on either one of these?
Whatever, any, any questions?
I, I just, one, what, what was our percentage collected last year in our total?
I, altogether, we were in the 98 range, I can't remember exactly, I should have looked that up before I came, but we, at this time last year, we were in the 97 percentile also.
Basically the same.
Yes, sir.
And what's the statewide average, do you know right offhand on collection?
I do not, but I will look that up and bring it for you at the next meeting.
We're pretty high up on the list.
We are, yeah. Yes. Especially for a county our size.
Other questions for Rita?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Court House Committee update, Commissioner Bobby Irving.
Let's see, where, where are we on that? We met, um. Court House Committee met January 31st at 11 o'clock, and we had, I'll just read the minutes, so everybody will know what we did, is Commissioner, myself, John Irwin, County Manager Michael Carter, Public Works Director David Spicer, and Assistant Manager Drew Todd. First item of business was discussion regarding the RFQ submission. County Manager Michael Carter explained RFQs cannot ask for pricing, and said not everyone submitted to questionnaires, which was correct. The committee went over how they ranked the firms who submitted responses to the RFQ. The committee unanimously agreed on the top choice, RND Architects. Michael Carter suggested inviting RND for an interview, and that date was set, I believe, for tomorrow, 2:00, for our committee meeting to go over some of the questions that we had. Next item was the roof at the courthouse. Mr. Carter explained there are continued difficulties with tech tech on fixing the courthouse roof. He said the color of the roofing material was a determination by engineers based on historical preservation, office, and availability. This comes about because the courthouse is a registered landmark, and it has to meet certain requirements before the work can be done, and then when the work's completed, it has, has to be signed off on. And the, I think the complaint is one color of the roofing was submitted, and that was agreed upon by the Historical Society in Raleigh or wherever they're located. Yeah, they approved those improvements that we made. And when the roof was put down, it was determined it was the wrong color. So it's up to the Roofing Company to correct that, and I think Mr. Carter's been working with them, and I hope we have that resolved here in the near future. And I'll give Mr. Carter a chance to comment when I finish. The third item was a discussion regarding the inside water damage and repair at the, what I consider the old courthouse. David Spicer said the plaster repair has been started, and when the plaster is fixed, it will be painted, and then we will start with the sheet rock. He said when the weather warms up, they can mix mud at the courthouse, but right now they're on hold due to the cold weather. The next item was a discussion regarding the ideas about using the courthouse basement, which was our old backup, I guess, to the courthouse. It's downstairs below Susie Gamble's office, you have to access it by outside, there's no inside way to get into those rooms. And those, those, that basement may be converted to some office or may be used for storage in the near future. The final item was a discussion regarding upgrades to the Black Building, as it is the third facility listed on the C coop, that's our, I guess, what is that, our emergency planning, if something goes wrong in the county. We were required at the time to have three, have main courthouse, then we, now we have the auxiliary Downton courthouse, but the Black Building still remains our third option if something was to happen to one of the other two courthouses. And we had a lengthy discussion this afternoon about how to proceed with some funds that we had, and what the commissioners ranked some of the buildings in a 1-2-3 order, or some of the projects in a 1-2-3 order, and I believe the Black Building was number two. So that's something that we may be looking, or number three, that we may be looking at in the near future. Other than that, the only thing I would add is about the roof on the old courthouse. When you have a building that is designated as historical landmark, there's a lot of paperwork, and there's a lot of work to be done to, if you have to make any upgrades or any repairs to a historical landmark building. And if, Mr. Carter can correct me, but I believe the, our application for the old courthouse was nine months plus, trying just to get the, the state to okay the work that was going to be done. That's one of my concerns about the listing of the three buildings that have been listed in the county as, as historical landmarks. It's if something happens in the future, the expense of repairing those buildings is increased by the, I guess, by the rules and regulations that Historical Society puts on any county that, that goes into repair work. Other than that, Commissioner John was there, if he has anything to add.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chair.
And if not, Mr. Carter can touch on some of the subjects if he wants to.
Only thing that I'll mention about the roof that has been applied to the courthouse is, as, as Commissioner Irwin pointed out, we went through a very lengthy process to get that, that roofing approved through the Historic Registry. And once approved, we provided the go-ahead, we initiated the agreement, the contract, and off it went. Roof that's there is in, now, the roof that is there is in decent condition. We don't have the same concerns about the leaking that we once did. However, it's been my stand that we paid for a certain roof, and that's the roof we expect to be on that courthouse. So as anyone who has tried to build or do any type of work in that area knows, it's not easy to go and get these things off the shelf nowadays. So we are waiting for the deuser of this roofing material to make a run of the specific color, and once that is completed, the contractor and the engineer that we brought on for that purpose will provide that roofing in its correct color, and we will gladly be glad and sign off on the project. That's all I have to add.
Thank you, sir. Next up, J O Meal RFP response, Mr. Carter.
And members of the board, I think on Friday, you were all sent a copy of the, it received for the inmate meals. The, had bidding open until 4:00 Friday afternoon, and at that time, there was only one submittal, which I believe you have a copy of, from GB Wagner Group LLC. And I will read from the bid sheet. They are proposing $6.89 for what I will call a regular meal for both breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and $7.50 per meal for what is categorized as a special diet. Addition to that pricing, there is a minimum that is included that identifies a 25 inmate number, and that is basically the floor in which this bid is calculated. And just for a quick reference, um. The regular meals, that is about a dollar over what the former agreement consisted of, and for the special meals, it's a dollar and 11 cents. I do believe this is still within, I understand it from the previous bid awards, I believe this is still well within the approved thoughts of the board at that time, and there is money in the current, and I would imagine the proposed budget to account for this moving forward. So based on that, I would recommend the award to GB Wagner Group LLC.
I hear a motion?
So move.
A motion in a second to award this to GB Wagner. Got a question, Bobby?
Hey. Just looking through part of the contracts, I think that there's a, uh. Don't know what page, it's one, two, three, four, five, maybe it's page seven, under additional, at the very bottom, additions of labor mandate clause. Have you looked through the, this contract that's being proposed? So we still need to get Heather's approval on it, or what's the next step, or just our approval?
There was a group of individuals that worked on the original request, and that group consisted of myself, Heather, Nick Hawks, it was a combination of different perspectives that went into it. Now, I won't speak for Heather, but, but we spent a lot of time trying to tune in that, that request, so that it did the best that it could to conform to what we were looking for. Now, myself, I think it does that, but I'll defer to Heather for her thoughts on it.
But you're personally happy with it?
Am, but I am not your attorney, but I, I would recommend you consider it, yes.
Let me get to my point, maybe Heather can answer, or Garrison can answer. On that bottom page, it says addition of labor maintenance clause. If a substantial minimum wage increase is bypassed by the legislature, then the Wagner Group preserves the right to evaluate pricing and increase accordingly. Now, if, I'm just going from what I've heard on television, if we accept federal prisoners, do we come under this Biden administration's minimum wage payment of, I think he's pushing $15 an hour for anybody that works or subcontractor that works for the federal government? Or am I just going into it too deep?
I'm not sure exactly how that would affect a contract that, you know, we have with an individual. You know, specific terms of the contract, you know, obviously are something that, I mean, we're gonna have to create a contract for how this operates, so, you know, and I'm not really sure how that would affect us specifically. We would be required to offer, you know, in a contract that we have, I don't know if that's something that we're going to be mandated, you know, to have, and there, and nothing's been raised at this point, and I, I don't know, that's, that's a, that's a what if.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question, because I know there's been a lot of talk on TV, I don't know if that law's passed or not, but if we are accepting federal prisoners, then he becomes a subcontractor, and I'm just looking at ways that, that might have to raise the price of these meals, but that, that's a fine, that satisfies me. The other thing I like about this is if Garrison's food costs go was up, then there's a provision for him to raise the price. But at the same time, if food costs happen to go down, there's a provision for him to lower the price to the county, is that correct, Garrison? So I, I like that, that's, covers him and it helps us in some situations. Other than that, I don't have any other concerns.
We got a motion in a second. Is there any further questions? John?
I just wanted clarification, we're voting on the bid, we haven't started contract negotiations yet, have we?
Exactly.
Right, okay, yeah, that's my, I just wanted clarification, Mr. Chairman, I'm.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor, thank you. Raise your right hand, five vote. Fiscal year in at 6:30, 20 to the audit contract, Ms. April Ham.
Evening. Included in your packets, you should have seen a copy of the audit, audit, excuse me, and a letter of intent from the current auditors, Robertson, Farmer, and Cox, the two gentlemen that presented the audit to you back in December, that's the two main ones that I work with, specifically Scott Wickham. So can I answer any questions about the audit contract or the letter of intent?
Whenever you, whenever they do the audit of the TDA, are they provided the session law 2011-170, House Bill 96, so that they can ensure that the grants made by the TDA are in compliance with the guidelines?
They're aware of the general statute, yes, and they, they know, they, they have reviewed. And they, they know, they, they have reviewed a lot of the minutes from the TDA. So, I couldn't specifically say what they have and they have not, but they are aware of that.
We providing them a copy of that House Bill?
It's, in, it's, in the minutes in our office, it is there included with everything that we have.
Only question I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? I make a motion we approve. Motion here a second. Second. Any further discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Thank you.
Go right ahead there, April.
Okay, the next thing I have is a general fund budget amendment. It's number seven. This is actually for earthquake reimbursement of funds that was paid out of the unappropriated, unassigned fund balance. We're gonna be putting that money back in that line. And it's an amount of $88,347.
Hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
First and a second, any discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Go right ahead.
And the third thing I have is a line item transfer request. This is actually for the transfer facility. The money is available for this. It's $15,000 coming out of maintenance of equipment, going to the scrap tire expense. This is actually the hauling of the scrap tires out of the county. Most of this expense I have noted for you is to New River Tire Recycling and to Mr. Kemp Irwin.
Motion to accept. So move. Motion in a second, any discussion? Not on favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have a request for closed session on our general statute 143-318.11.a-3. Consult with attorney. This time, we will
session.
Motion to go in closed session here a second, second, on favor. You guys just sit tight, we'll go in this little room right here. Be back shortly.
Go ahead and call our regular meeting back to order. No action taken in the closed session. Next on the agenda is the Lions Club.
Motion to table until the work session, first work session in March, sir.
Motion to table to the first meeting in March. Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Motion, second. All in favor? Five votes. County manager.
I have a couple other than what's identified on your agenda. On your agenda, there's a sequence of pages, 93 through 95, basically the identifier for the official certificate of entry for those properties in the National Register of Historic Places. Second item on your agenda is your January bill and inspections report, which I encourage you to review and look over.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Sir.
I would ask that the county manager forward a copy of the letter that you provided us to the town manager. I note that he was not CC'd on this paper, on this document. According to the CC, it went to the mayor and the Allegheny County Director for the Allegheny County for Economic Development. I think it's something the town manager should be aware of. National courtesy.
Couple other items. We've already talked about the interviews tomorrow with the engineer architect. Couple other things. We've had some recent meetings with our EMS, with the Allegheny County Rescue and Laurel Springs, and just looking to understand and identify different thoughts, concerns that may exist between the groups. We'll actually be meeting again in another couple weeks, just trying to bring everyone together on the same page so we all have good understandings. I will say that the Allegheny County Rescue has identified some suggestions for change in their current agreement that they have with the county. I cleaned those up today. I have sent them back to Allegheny County Rescue to make sure that I included everything that was identified, and once that is returned, I'll forward those on to Heather, and we'll have discussions about that at some point, bringing it before the board for your discussion as well. I'd wanted to take a moment in our work session today. We talked about the $2 million and the $200,000 that the county will be receiving from the state. And in my few moments between work session and meeting, somewhere in my stack of papers, which I will find, I guess, at a later time, but I actually have written confirmation from my contact in the Office of State Budget, and it says, "These funds are not subject to ARPA standards." It is a different bucket. So I just want to, for the record, identify that these two awards are not in the same funding cycle as the ARPA funds, nor subject to such regulations or restrictions. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Next is commissioner comments. Mr. Evans.
I have a whole lot. I do like to say appreciation for Johnny Wishon, the report that he gave, and I know a lot, put a lot of effort into that, and look forward to hopefully that developing. Give him a little more time, hopefully to develop it this year and everything goes well. And then I will back up and just comment a little bit. We did have a work session today to talk about some state appropriations that the county got. It goes back to some courthouse needs, the discussion that started about four or five years ago. The state finally passed, because they finally passed the budget, some proceeds that were discussed about five years ago are now we're coming to realize, and of course, the needs kind of changed a little bit, but we're going to be doing a study on that, and there's still some needs that we'll be able to utilize these funds for and have some discussions in the future, month or so, if we can get works done.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd also like to thank John Wishon for the report that he gave, the efforts that were made for the agricultural fair. Hopefully, now that, hopefully, COVID is behind us, we can make that a little bit larger, reach out to outlying communities and bring some people in so that they can enjoy the benefits of Allegheny County. One of the things that I look at, we are now in the first session in February. It's an election year. In the past two elections, we've talked about the Quartersent sales tax. We have had no discussion. Do we want to try it again? I believe that we need to start having a discussion because we need to get on this and start getting an explanation out there to the citizens of Allegheny County about the Quartersent sales tax. But that's the first, I guess, the first thing we need to do. Do we want to try it again? If we do, we've got to get it on the ballot, and that means we've got to get going. I'll be glad to sit on that committee if that is what my fellow commissioners decide that we need to do. The other thing that I have thinking, as we have the agricultural fair coming up, the agricultural dinner, I think it'd be nice if we took time, sometime this summer, hopefully after the budget, and include it in the budget for a get-together for our first responders to recognize them. It could be a simple thing on a Saturday afternoon, burn some hot dogs, put some potato salad out, but invite our first responders and their families to come in and show our appreciation. That would be the least that we've done, that we could do for them, in my opinion. Quartersent sales tax, first responder dinner, I'd like to thank the county manager for his efforts. I know it's aggravating. He protects his budget. I don't blame him. So anyone out there, if you want the county to pony up, you better, you better get your budget in. you want the county to pony up, you better, you better get your budget in, because unless you have it in that budget request, it's not going to go very far, because frankly, he scares us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Bobby?
Thank you. I'd like to let the public know that during our work session today, the board recommended that we send a letter to our legislators concerning Highway two twenty-one and ninety-three about the speed limit. We're still working on it. We haven't given up. I look forward to see what happens in the next few weeks, maybe a month or longer. As mentioned before, the agriculture banquet will be February the fifteenth at six o'clock at Winter Woods off of Highway twenty-one. That's a, that's a very good event for the farmers and for all the people of Allegheny County. I would, there's free tickets, there'll be a dinner, and some awards given out that night. If you need a ticket, you can see Johnny Wishon, anybody at Soil and Water, I believe, has the tickets. Aaron Ray Tompkins has tickets. So if you're in rest and going, I tell you, it's a great night for the farmers of the county. Then the Friends of the NRA is having a dinner on February the twenty-sixth. That's a fundraiser that's also going to be held at Winter Woods, and that's a very good, very good function. It's a, it's a nice time for everybody to get together and support hunting and gun safety. That's the main thing. Then the other is a personal note. It was fifty-four years ago today that I was involved in the Tet Offensive in Vietnam. Not to this exact day, but a few days later, I got to go to Way Phu Bay. There was an interesting, I was there for three days. It was a very interesting time in my life. That was one of the toughest battles Marine Corps fought in Vietnam. But we also, week, two weeks before that, I was in Dongha, which was on the border of the DMZ, between North and South Vietnam. That was another learning experience. I got to witness the US in a dogfight with Russian and Chinese MiGs over the DMZ. I don't know whose plane was shot down, but one was shot down, and our helicopter support rescue team did not go out, so I'm assuming it was a Vietnam, North Vietnamese aircraft that was shot down. So to those veterans who were in the Tet Offensive, I thank you. I'm glad a lot of you made it back. I'm sorry some of you didn't. But that was fifty-four years ago today. I just turned twenty years old. I'd had my twentieth birthday sitting in a rice paddy and eating a sponge cake. Orange sponge, sponge cake was my, was my cake. But thank you.
Thank you. See you.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting last week, and I was given some pretty shocking statistics that I just wanted to share with you. Currently, we only have twenty-nine family dwelling properties, meaning, you know, homes, not just land, for sale in our county right now. And only two of those homes are for sale for less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's no secret that our community is changing with a lot of people moving in. So we are evidently the place to be. You know, this was compared with probably three years ago, you're talking over a hundred properties at any time for sale in our county. So I would have a hard time believing that there's many places in the United States of America that are experiencing the same kind of statistics that I just shared with you. So a local Realtor gave us those statistics, so. And it's not just for us. Ashe County's also experiencing this. Watauga County's experiencing this, so we're evidently the place to be. Also, I wanted to thank Cole and Noah for all their work on the disc golf course. I rode up there this weekend. I'm really interested on Saturday to see what this is all about, because I was looking at that thing, and I was like, I don't know how this works. I'm, I guess I'm an old fogey. I've never played disc golf before, you know? And I was trying to explain to my dad that I thought it was similar to cornhole, but then I got up there and looked, and he goes, "There is no way you could throw a cornhole bag or this that far." And I was, "Well, we'll just have to go Saturday and find out." So everybody come out on Saturday and find out what's going on up there, because it really looks pretty neat. So there's a tournament going on, and it starts at eleven AM. Is that right, Cole? But thank you all for your hard work on that, and for turning that, that mountain into something that we can use and enjoy, so.
Thank you, Michelle. I just want to speak a minute for Cole, what he's done. I mean, this, this disc golf has been a few years in the making and getting completed. And Cole, you've done a great job with it, and all your other parks and recreations, your tennis, I see you're trying to get tennis started up, and basketball and all the programs, and it certainly doesn't go unnoticed. Agriculture Fair, that's a big night for farmers in Allegheny County, and I'm glad our board has always supported that event. It's a, it's a good night for all the farmers to come together and talk and eat and have some awards and recognize some people, and it's just a good, good venue. The Ag Banquet is on the fifteenth in the Soil and Water. Like Bobby said, if you want tickets, Soil and Water Extension Service, they have available tickets. I'd like to thank Napco for the donations they do with making the tickets and the signage for, for things. They, they a big part of Allegheny County. And in that being said, that's all I have. Heather, you have anything to add? Nothing further. Entertaining a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Got a motion, got a second? All in favor?